The Fire Chief would go before our annual audit.
So, good afternoon, members of council. Fire Chief Robinson is going to present to you some information we've been able to develop recently in reference to an engine that was purchased in 2019 and some opportunities that we now have as a result of that. So with that, I'll give it away to Chief Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Okay. Mayor and council, like Mr. Tony said, we've had a situation with one of our fire engines we bought back in 2019. It was the engine we bought on the AFG grant. And you have your packets up there. Y'all want to go along with me and I can explain the engine and the issues we've had with it. Background, in 2020, the Pierce Sabre engine was purchased from 10-8 Fire Equipment around June of 2020, utilizing grant funds from the AFG in the amount of 360,000. The engine was a stock unit and when we took delivery of it, it only had 18 miles on it. The truck is very vital. Structure. Component. Water. Fighting. The factors are taken. We started having. The 400. We dropped the transmission on a brand new end. Forward. After 2003, they smoked my house. Just to the pressure governor fail. Separate active. And to explain. That's what water. And everything is. We don't. Computer. They. Friday's. Down on. Then. Had a TV on. Living complex. The fire department is only this unit. Currently sitting. Just one of their. They. Throughout metro. This cost facility. Waiting. Testing. Three to four months. Shows. 10-8, which are the people that bought the truck. Their. Order for. Vehicle. Will be provided until. The Pierce technicians are to remove and replace all items that may have contributed to the failure on the existing. Invitation to member of the department to perform a financial inspection and test. Last. New 12 months. From day after. On. Even if it be a repair car, still. Like. Have you? And that one we will recommend. Two. To Pierce config. Uh. Back to the existing unit. Our colors, which is, that's part of the package, they allow that. The price. Is 100,000. And. We have. And then the maintenance. 8,120. Grand total of 230,000. All right. This year costs us 679,100. Was about. And three. When get. Uh. Exist. 15,000. Plus a five truck. I. To. On this. Yeah. With the coming. For the. Time will be approximately 24 months. So we're talking two years before we would get a brand new truck. The pricing for the exact. Very truck we have. Prevention. 120. Minus 415,000. Be a grand total. Five. On. The new. Brand new engine. 4500. The maintenance service. 20, if we decide. For that new unit. For months. Staff recommendation is going with option two, which will allow the city to purchase a new fire engine at a reduced. Duty. Vehicle until delivery. The current. Have been initially since delivery in June 20. Staff. Is put back in service. If me. Chief. Structure. That again. That's a. This is. You all will consider.
Does any. Any question? Patient? We hear. Data.
Which you utilize grant funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Purchase. And it was. Is it? You purchase.
Yeah. It has. For the time is the trucks gun down. And they had. Still.
Still on a warranty? So. For the repair.
Oh, that's. I think that's the cause of this. Self. Give trade in, I think.
Let me see back in. We're not.
One. What my concern is that we bought the. 2020 with grant money. With two years. Two years. It had. And so my concern was, is the warranty of it? Uh, and how. Bring this. And how it will cost. And get a brand new one. I think. For 400. Back to.
That was. Option.
This is. Talking to. We had. This engine problematic. The model of engine. Design. The. A lot of. So much so that. Moved away from that design, they don't even. Warranty has covered all of the various repair options that he went over. We've not had to pay for any of that. Work on it, they take it back. The challenge is. Mention. Out and not know that the fire engine is going to work. We can. Back, send it back and get it back. Was amazing. Now. For Archie, you can rely on the vehicle. And they. We got. That's. It's not good.
Yeah.
And so. Recognize that. As a customer. Went to the manufacturer and said. If you're a customer. Eliminate. Didn't know. Or train design didn't. What can we? Generate. Each of them was. Specifically. We recoup all of the money that we invested in the purchase in 2016. Plus additional. We put that towards the price of a new engine, which is already in process online as we speak. It would allow us to get rid of the engine that has caused all of these operational issues. Without any financial loss to the city.
Okay.
And by spending the 235,000, we end up with a brand new engine. Again, with a full warranty that is reliable, is state of the art, and hopefully gets us out of this.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Problematic situation we've been in.
Okay.
Hopefully that adds a little more.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, then, Mr. Heath.
Uh, yes, so I was trying to get, trying to follow the numbers as well. We spent 360 and. Mr. City Administration, you just said we will get reimbursed the 360? Is that correct? Okay.
As a credit toward the purchase of the new engine.
Okay, so. 360 minus. What's the new engine?
679,100.
Okay. That's that 235,120, that's the difference we would owe.
After the value for the engine we're trading in and the cost of the new engine, the difference is 235,120.
Okay, and then what would be the source of those funds?
Mr. David, if you would, please. Evening, council members. So if we decided with option two, the source of those funds would be the general fund, would have to use general funds to pay for that difference.
Okay. And we would take delivery May 2023, that's correct? Okay, and then what do we do in the meantime?
They're going to provide a loaner.
Loaner, okay. All right, and what are our costs associated with the loaner?
Any.
Oh, okay. So any, anything that goes wrong with the loaner, 10-8 will repair?
No, I think some uses we were having, you know. We, you know, wear our tires or something like that, or standard oil change, but I think any major repair like we've done before in the past when we've leased trucks, any major drive train, the company that we lease from would take care of that.
Good, general maintenance, all right? Um, and then. Are there, will there be any escalation clause in this new contract? Because inflation, we're in the midst of inflation and it, you know, may continue to go up. Are they asking for us to pay inflation prices when we take delivery in 2023? Or the price today is the price we will pay upon delivery?
Price today is.
Price we pay and what we'll pay.
Okay, okay, so no escalation call up.
No escalation calls, we want to present the details in a work session. Our intent is to come back at the next regular agenda and present to mayor and council a contract for purchase that you can vote on and approve for a specific price, and that's the price that's locked in. There's no escalator, no change in price once we have an approved purchase agreement approved by mayor and council.
Okay, so the only other thing I would ask then, if you would get clarity regarding maintenance, just so that we're clear about what that expectation is, then I'm fine. All right, thank you.
Mr. Heath?
Uh, yes, sir. My question is, new vehicle comes with a warranty, is that not correct? Now, the 38,120 preventive maintenance service contract, why would there be additional cost for it, or is that the cost for the warranty?
That's the cost for the entire warranty, so all the new engines that we, that we have or we're purchasing. We set up a preventive maintenance contract.
Okay.
Throughout, you know, the year, which I think is twice a year, we have a maintenance on those trucks. And that's been some of the issues in the past with our trucks over the years. Our facilities couldn't accommodate the big fire engines.
One other thing. Having driven tractor trailers east coast to the west coast like I have. You always want to go with a Cummins engine. A Cummins engine will idle off with no, no buildup of RPM with like 80,000 pounds on it. It's just phenomenal. Detroit engines, Detroit requires you to rev the engine and, and not to, what they call lag it. Because then it would, it has problems breaking some of the internal parts of the engine. So Cummins is definitely the one that you want to go with.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That's it. Thank you.
Um, and other questions? I don't know if you had a chance to look at that record.
Just for clarity's sake, chief, and first of all, I apologize to mayor and council for being late. But just for clarity's sake, in reference to the preventive maintenance service contract, insist of exactly what? I, I understand it, but there's certain things that's going to be done each period that it goes in for preventive maintenance, which is going to allow them to work on A to 100, whatever, whatever it is, those certain points, all right? And if anything is identified, at that point, those things are being repaired under the maintenance contract. Am I right on that?
Right.
Art process?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, mayor.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to follow up, how long is the warranty, the 38,000, the prevent, preventive maintenance warranty? Is that for the life of the vehicle?
We usually.
Annual cost?
Usually renew it annually.
It's an annual cost?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you so much, and this item again will be brought back for your review at the next council meeting.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have Mr. Josh Carroll from Malden Jenkins. He will be presenting the September 30th, 2021 auditor's discussion and analysis.
Thank you, Peterson, mayor and council, thanks for having me. Doug is on the way, he got stuck in a bunch of traffic. I did too on the way, so he may show up before I finish, I think he's close, but I'll get started. As Peterson said, I'm going to go over the 2021 audit report.
We're talking about this, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, the PowerPoint doesn't work, correct?
Right, it was issues by technical, so.
Okay, yeah, so the city puts together an elaborate act for annual comprehensive financial report, it's 100 pages long, and I'm just going to go over some of the highlights and the required communication. So, a little bit about Malden and Jenkins, we've been around over 100 years now. We invest a lot of time and energy in state and local governments. Doug, and myself, and everyone that worked on the city's audit, we do nothing but governmental audits, don't do any tax work or any other type of work, so we spend a lot of time and bring a lot of expertise to the city's audit. The statements are the responsibility of the city's management. Our objective as your external auditor is to express an opinion, followed all the generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is what you'd hope to get. The next slide, I'm looking at the significant accounting policy slide and management adjustment, judgments and estimates, and if I was on council, I think I'd want to know, do we have anything unusual or aggressive in our accounting policies or our estimates that might kind of influence our statements one way or the other? And you don't, the policies are disclosed in the notes, and the estimates are mostly your useful life of capital assets, and your actuary uses a lot of assumptions in your net pension liability calculation, but you're part of, you know, the cost sharing GMA plan, and so that's, all the cities in that plan are using those same assumptions, and we evaluated them and we feel pretty good about them, so there's probably nothing significant there. Yeah, I can't see the page numbers, sorry about that. So, I'm on page six now. All right, I kind of forgot the PowerPoint's not going along. Page six, this slide, we did have a few audit adjustments this year, that hasn't been the norm, and I'll go over those a little bit later in the presentation. Page seven now. Slide, we are independent of the city, we don't do any bookkeeping or any management advisory services that might influence our opinion as your external auditor, we only do the external audit. So, the next several pages are a bunch of financial trend slides that kind of compare five years, 10 years of revenues and fund balance, and I'm going to skip to page 11, which is probably the most important of those slides, and it deals with your general fund, fund balance as a percentage of your annualized expenditures. And as you can see here, we've gone from 2012 to 2021, that trend has come up significantly in the city. Back years ago, when we first picked up the city's audit, kind of, you guys kind of put that into plan, and our goal was to build that up, and we've done that, and the GFOA is the standard setting body for, you know, local governments, they recommend two to three months, 16 to 25 percent, and in 2021, we're 125, 130 percent there, so we have really made the efforts to build up that fund balance over the last 10 years, so it's really been nice to see. And then I'm going to skip to page 15, since the slides aren't up on the PowerPoint here. As I said, we did have a couple journal entries this year, that hasn't been the norm, and those resulted in a couple findings. When we looked at property taxes, there was a kind of a glitch in the import of the billing, and a few commercial customers were technically overbilled a little bit. It wasn't a, it wasn't a citywide error, we, I'm not really sure how it happened, but we identified those properties, and I think the city's plan has been to reduce the future tax billing, I believe Peterson may correct me if I'm wrong there. But it was about $140,000 in total, you know, citywide, and it was just a few commercial customers, so I don't think it's something we should be super concerned with. Citywide and. But we did, that wasn't material. Our hands are. The standards. Cars were a weakness for that. And. Things. It. We, but the budgets for. Couple. And we budgeted. Was available. 60,000 dollars or so. For the state of Georgia. Say that, that, you know, finding its funds, it was. T-Splus fund, not really. Funds. But we did note that. Going forward. Did. Audit there. Did I was planning action program? We looked at all. That what. It's a great agreement. Any problem? For that project. Were supposed to determine this contract suspended or barred from working with federal others, and there wasn't recommendation for two of those contractors. Didn't do it. But we just weren't. So we ultimately. Finding for federal grant. You know. With the grant. And, and we did. And those. Not. Under the bar, so you didn't contract with someone who was, but you theoretically could have, but. And so we didn't. Use. We spent it on there. We just. Contracts were. Were. For us. You know, versus. Was. Control. But for the grant, the only thing we found. We have. Points. It's, uh, we have some. George says they're over. You should. Eat those to the state. Do. So we. Hundred checks that were totaled about 60 grand, so we just kind of highlight those and. Clean those up. It's often. Say, well, we don't really know. Attorney to help this. Ultimately. Whistle. They said we didn't. Practice. They should make. Offering employees. In this. That. It was. Fiscal year, it wasn't. Amount, but so we just. Like that, that we do make sure we're reconciling that as we're reporting those federal expenditures. 91. Up. Conduit. Have some. And. Currently. Conduit debt, conduit does. Develop. Forty would issue. Certainly not responsible for. And. In the notes. So. Of debt. Guys. One is. A little. Note. Much. Stand. We issued. Eventually start getting bond down. The discussion. For example, is outstanding as of our September 30th date. Have data currently, and we need that. Guys, 91. Out to appropriate people and trying to. Uh, info. Can report that. Was into effect. And I'm on. The element. Big one coming up is VDC. Kind of defines what. And. The least is we may have just cash as we're going. That is. And it's. Capital. Liability. Emortage. I don't see it being. Which number for the city, certainly not as large as like the net pension liability or when we had implemented that several years ago, but it is. Going to have to look at. Yeah. Leases is the biggest part of. So. It's going to change, it's effective. We do. Provide free continuing. All of our clients, some can get. Free. Peterson. Anybody wants to learn more. Doug. Doug, if you'd like to.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor Proton.
Okay, thank, thank you so much for the report. This is our city attorney. Um, that has to be, um, the, comments regarding. Uh, what I, yeah, some, eight, one, two, the city attorney. And, uh. The current, um, is that. The liability of the city. Question. And then secondly, what do we need to do legally in terms of how the, both the development authorities structured? New required, uh, we need the conduit funding. Uh, because, uh, authority, uh, but kind of. Right, uh, when we were smaller, much smaller. So I just need to understand now what it means and what had now had one, um. So if you could, to that, but if you provide, um, that need relative to.
Bond, basically, so case complex, the city's bond. So that's reflected in your financial statements as a liability. So currently what's disclosed in the footnotes, and you can make reference to page 61. The only conduit debt you have disclosed in your footnotes, that development authority issue is in the amount of $5 million. And so at the time, we could not determine what the outstanding balance is as of 9/30/21.
You tell what is, what was for, the $5 million?
It was for the landmark Christian school project. Taskable revenue.
Uh, excuse me?
Do you have a copy of the statements?
This, this book.
Big book.
Big book.
There's 61, so that's your, that's your only conduit debt that was disclosed. Now, others, other governments had development authorities for years and very active. They're having a major problem with this because they have so many revenue bonds that were issued to third parties. And they're having difficulty obtaining what that outstanding balance is. For you all, as your development authorities, when you just get started, it shouldn't be a big problem. As long as you have the right controls in place, uh, now that you're gathering that information. And so it shouldn't be a big deal. But what I always recommend our clients is almost treat it like it's your debt that you're recording in your books. That you're reaching out to them maybe quarterly, updating that information, almost confirming that balance at year end. So that you'll be able to disclose that information in your footnote.
Well, you absolutely, I mean, that's gonna be extremely important because we're not a large city. And, you know, the, the staff and the operations and all of that is under the city. So that's why I'm concerned or asking questions about the legality or new legality of all of that. So I'm asking that we evaluate that and we provided some recommendations so that we are not caught in a terrible situation because we, you know, because we're too closely aligned, for lack of, lack of a better word, if you will. So I, I'm asking for that evaluation. And if you can provide that to us, that would be in preparation for the 2023 requirements of this reporting.
I would just send a confirmation, just like you would for your own debt. Send a confirmation to them, let them confirm that balance.
Well, that's true, but my question is about some internal issues. Yeah, you understand what I'm saying. And you too, Mr. City Attorney, right? And Mr. David, just, you know, making sure that we have everything established. The controls in place, legality of all of that. Because, one, because of this new rule. But two, because I know the development authority is planning to engage in some additional things that we haven't in the past. And I just want, we now have a chance to just make sure that we have all our ducks in a row before we embark on that. So I'm, I'm asking for that evaluation, please.
And Mayor Proton, we can, we can actually look at the offering documents, uh, which are, which are the documents that are prepared for all of your bonds to determine who the right parties are to get the numbers from. Because the offering document should always have, if there's a trustee, for example, then we contact a trustee and they keep track of all that information. So we're happy to look at the offering documents and just to do a check down. Make sure that the city does not, whether the city has any obligations with respect to any of the bonds.
Okay, that, that would be great. But then how are we funding the development authorities, right? I mean, they just haven't been operating and so, you know, they haven't generated funds. So all of those are kinda questions about how we're structured and how we're going to operate in the future. Because I know we've had some discussions about using the development authority to do certain projects, right? And so I just wanna make sure that legal, legally, that there's that separation. But then we fund them, right? So what does that mean? And what does that look like? So there's just a lot of questions regarding that, that I think we just need to delve into and have some really in-depth conversations about that.
So very excellent suggestions, Mayor Proton. Thank you for that. It is part and parcel of taking an inactive DDA and make it an active one. So all of your questions are very valid and we intend very much so to answer all of those because we are now ramping up the DDA for its intended purpose and we need to clarify all of those questions. One of many values of these audit reports is it gives us guidance in how to shape policy and how to build those internal controls in conjunction with our city attorney. And so we take all of these findings and recommendations and then operationalize them, both with the city attorney or the process. And so you make a very valid point. Our DDA has previously not been very active. So these questions may not have come to the fore. But now that our intention is to spur development and to use DDA as a vehicle for doing that, we must and we're obligated to answer all those questions thoroughly and completely. That's the plan. We will come back at a date certain to provide an update on these issues once we get, consult with the city attorney now that we have the findings from the auditors' report.
Well, thank you for that. And the bottom line is that separation. You know, what does that look like, the separation in terms of operations, in terms of funding, in terms of the legality of it, et cetera, et cetera? So, uh, thank you.
Any other member of council got a question? Mr. Whitmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the question is gonna be more or less directed towards staff in reference to page 15. When we talk about the property tax billing errors. And you indicated here that we overbilled. And my question to staff is, on some commercial properties, we're not being properly billed for water. And they were identified. And I know some things were supposed to ramp up, to put them in place. And we put the proper meters in there so that they can pay their stated monthly billing for water. I just wanted to find out, where are we on that?
Hello, counsel. You've, uh, put things in place, uh, some safeguards in place. Like now we're doing, it's gonna be the change out program, which we should get accurate billing from there. We've also, as a matter of fact, this year, look, seeking forward to getting the utility building specialists also to make sure that we're catching those loopholes and other little innuendos where, uh, customers, especially our large pan and choice customers like Duracell and some of the others, that we're making sure we're keeping in tabs with that. We've also implemented some, a new meter system with those choice customers that ECG personally read their sales. So, and they coincide with those customers to make sure that they're 101 with each of the billing. And we've had some good, uh, good turnout about that. We've had less complaints now. I know most of the time that we've had, uh, some just case by case basis on, on a few. But we've started the program and it looking pretty good enough for me to give, uh, some kind of presentation to the city administration office.
Okay, and then as a, as a follow-up. So for the large companies that we had a problem with that were not paying their fair share. For water. And I think there's something in the policy where we can go back X amount of years. They would pay that. So I'm, I'm wondering if that part of it has been completed since we put the new metering in for those particularly large companies?
They're in progress.
In progress, okay.
They're in progress. Like I said, we having to look at those and going back into accounts. Like I say, we had, when we did the transition between Harris to NCO, we're still tracking things now. You know, and like I say, once in a while some come up and once we do it, we attack it. We also now been reviewing a couple of the ordinances and preparing to bring a few to council that, uh, what we will say antique and need to be brought up revised. So we're working in those aspect as well.
Okay, thank you. And my other question would be towards the city administrator. And that is where the auditors stated that for over five years, anything that's over five years that we have not reconciled, that is usually sent to the state. Now, I've been on council for seven years and I think I've heard this over and over and over again. Right, so my question is, what are we doing to comply with state for those that we have not been able to reconcile and we've been holding on to those monies?
So, um, staff and I have already reconciled that report. So as soon as we got this financial statement from Maudlin Jenkins, we put together all those checks. We've already contacted Department of Revenue. They sent us the template that they use. So we're gonna compile all those, put it under template and send it to Department of Revenue before the close of this fiscal year. So that way they will not be audit finding for next year.
Okay, so we're basically ahead of the game? We're not waiting till the last minute?
No, we're not waiting till the last minute. My team, ours, already put that list together. I just gotta sit with them this week to make sure that we send it to Department of Revenue. So that way we don't have that finding again.
Okay, and it was another one. Uh, the new GASP pronouncement for future years. And we talked about leases. And I know in the past, we have been finding out hit and miss that there were leases that were in department hands and never made it up to, and I believe it should be maintained with the city clerk. Are we back on task with that now?
So, um, since the new administration has come in, they've made sure that everything tried to be streamlined. They've been in contact with every department to make sure that the city clerk's office has all those documents. To go a step further, I've been in communication with this company called Debtbook. So what they do, they handle leases and debt management. So all the GASP, all these GASP rules that's being discussed right now, they also follow and stay up to date with them. They will help us prepare the amortization schedule, keep track of our principal payments, interest payments, to make sure that we're on track, which will also help us with the conduit debt to make sure we pull that information and upload it as well. So that way when Maudlin Jenkins comes back, they will just have the portal go in there and be able to pull all that financial data in the, the secret formats that they're used to and accustomed to.
And my last and final question, unless you say something that sparks something else. With this new, um, program that we have now for finance.
ClearGov.
Is this something as far as our contracts, all of our leases, rather, that we have throughout the city can be implemented into there as well?
So that's why we're talking to Debtbook. ClearGov is more of a transports, transparency portal, budget portal, personnel portal, where every, what we went through this year when it came to the budget, we can do that every single year. So that way it's easy to use, easy to access, transparency, where the citizens can see our expenses, our revenues. For projects that the city is, is gonna perform, there's a project portal where, for example, Mr. Dana Smith, when he starts building the fire station and going through that, he can put timelines, updates. So that way citizens, if they want to, can put it in their phones where they get email updates of what's going on in the, in the city, where we are, what phases we are within certain projects. And when it comes to personnel, HR will be able to put the new comp study that we're working on that hopefully gets approved by Mayor and Council this evening. They'll be able to put the pay ranges, the personnel, the job titles, everything. And we'll be able to keep track of all that within ClearGov and be streamlined and house in one location.
So, just, just one more question and then, so Reader's Digest version now. Okay, so it can't go into ClearGov, but there's another application that you're looking at putting that into?
So the financial numbers will be in there, but you won't be able to see them as well as in Debtbook, pretty much? Like you'll see the bottom line number, but not the schedules and how everything should fit for. Gentlemen behind me to review them.
Okay, and you had something that you wanted to add, sir?
I was just gonna add, GASP, I think we have in this presentation, but GASP 96 deals with subscription based, not the arrangements. So that's similar to GASP 7, the leases. So if you had a cloud based, uh, system that you have access to, that's treated almost like a capital lease, which you recognize as a capital asset as well as a liability. So that's not required. But that's very similar to 87. So I just wanted, I didn't know if it's ClearGov, it's like a cloud base?
Yes, it's a cloud base.
Okay, so that follows with GASP 96, and you have to treat that as a separate question.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, um, this question is for Mr. Peterson.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to know what we are doing to avoid, prevent the property tax errors.
So, um, we've hired a new senior accountant. Her name is Ms. Nikisha Baker. Ever since she's been on board, she has dived into the system. And once we got these findings, she actually brought them to me before I got the report. And we have been in communications with the vendors who we owe money and also vendors that owe us for underbilling. And when we did find these issues, she brought them up to myself. I reviewed, signed off, and we collected those that owed and we cut a check for the ones that we do owe funds for. So we have been digitally being proactive when it comes to that aspect. Plus she's going through multiple trains on how the software of NCO works to make sure that the accounting, the issue that happened last year doesn't repeat itself this year.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanna add, excuse me, members of council, uh, don't forget the, and I, and I mean, I said this during my state city address, I can say it again. Upon our arrival to this administration this year, our staffing levels were at deplorable levels in terms of, I don't know how they got any work done. For whatever reason, it resonates. When we talked about public safety, I gave an example of a situation that happened, uh, I believe, uh, once right, right across, not too far from your house, Ms. Joel, as relates to issues in public safety. The staffing levels was just, was just as bad or worse in between utility and administration, in particular finance. And so what I, what we, the part I wanna make sure we don't lose sight in, a lot of what you're hearing that was negligent. I'm just gonna call it what it is. It was negligence, was as a result, the directors were not, were not, could not actually perform their jobs because they didn't have the staffing in place. They had to choose between tasks A, B, and C that was required to be done. They had to make a decision what was actually going to not fall through the cracks. And so I have to make that real clear that a lot of what you're hearing, adequate, totally adequate concerns and questions by council. But a lot of it was a result of the inaccurate lack of staffing that was in place. And so now a lot of it's been hired, uh, I guess this year, is actually, in this case, hopefully now, we're actually now trying to basically make sure that we get ourselves back in compliance, some of the other areas that I won't say publicly, that I'm aware of now, that some, a few, a few vendors are gonna be upset when they find out they owes money on a lump sum, big lump sum of money. Because again, inadequate staffing for, for the department here to decide whether I'm gonna actually do the billing. Because again, the inadequate staffing for the, for the department here to decide whether I'm going to actually do the billing for the customer or actually do this ambulance chasing that for money that's due to us. So I want to just make sure it all full of transparency, that's what we're, we're literally still, I, I made it clear, it would take us eighteen to eighteen months to almost two years to get our government in what I call standard market practice. That doesn't, that doesn't include some of the things that, that we've had tried to do this year to make sure that we stay up with the competition. As we, as you have found out later tonight, we've, we're losing a great employee to, to our competition and rightfully so, but uh, I, I just want to just make sure we don't lose sight of what, actually what happened and a lot of information that's being brought to you tonight, so.
So I wanted to also add for context, and I'm sure everyone is aware of this, this is an audit report from a year ago.
Yes, just.
Yeah.
This is the budget that ended in September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. And as you've heard from Mr. David tonight, in advance of this audit report, we had already begun making internal process changes, recognizing billing errors, ensuring that we were capturing leases in the city clerk's office. So I want to take a moment to congratulate Mr. Davis and the finance team, they didn't wait for the audit report. As we began to write our internal ship, some of these changes have been implemented already. Audit report is very valuable because it gives us additional guidance to begin to again make those internal changes, but we are very focused on operational efficiency, following policy, certainly being legal in all that we do, and there's still some work to do. Um, we're finding uh on a fairly regular basis, things that still need to be revised, policies that still need to be changed, and so it's a work in progress. But in the nine months that we have been on the ground working, I think we've made some tremendous strides so that you will not see some of those errors continue to repeat. Those checks that have been outstanding for five years will not be outstanding in the next audit report. And so we're making strides, it's a work in progress, but we are going in the right direction.
Mr. Davis, you had enough questions?
Um, yes, I, I just, I asked that question of Mr. Peterson because I knew that he had already taken care of it and our citizens need to know it. So again, I'm, I'm just amazed at our, at the new administration, uh, at our staff and how you are diligently working. And uh, you had a pretty high mountain to climb when you first came here. So that question was intentional, Mr. Peterson, I just wanted to make sure that our citizens know that this is corrected. And yes, this is the audit of September of twenty twenty-one, so thank you.
Mr. Whitmore, you had a question?
And as a follow-up to what my colleague was just saying, I am aware that this audit was, report is from last year. Uh, and I also knew that there were certain things that were put in place, some, certain things that have been corrected, certain things that still being worked on. But yet and still, there's certain things that goes back six and seven years, that's a repeat every single year as well. So I was just wondering what were we doing under the new administration, under your leadership as finance, to uh take care of some of these things that have been repeat since I've been on council. And I'm not going to go back further than seven years, I'm going to talk about since I've been on council. And I think that you answered my questions and it looks as if uh we're on a path to correct these things so that when they come in and do the audit, we're not going to have these repeat things that we have seen year after year after year. And I applaud not only the, the administration, the city administrator, but also uh those individuals with the various departments. That have been doing certain things to identify, correct, and make it a working smooth machine. So all of that comes into play and uh the city of Fairburn is going to be better because of it, so thank you.
I have one final question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Peterson, uh, regarding uh the funds to the state, um, outstanding just a five years. Are there, are we required to do any um marketing or posting and this to alert individuals, what, what does that look like?
Um, what we're required to do is actively try to make sure that those individuals come in and receive their monies. Um, so by sending emails and follow-up to those individuals, and if we try for at least one to two years and they still haven't come to collect those funds, then we're allowed to send that over to the state.
And what's that percentage, uh, what does that percentage look like?
The percent.
Uh, of you've made contact, the successful contact?
Um, I don't have the percentage top of my head.
Okay.
Uh, we, we have found a couple, but as they stated in the findings, there is some checks on here that's over five years old. Um, and the report that we ran, we're at ninety-six thousand that we're planning to send to the Department of Revenue.
All right, um, and then are we able to do any communication, public communication, alerting the citizens that this is happening? Uh, direct them to go check the state's website or something to see if your name is on there? We obligated to do that?
All the checks, they're not just for citizens, they're also for vendors who haven't cashed checks and um they're maybe in different states. So even if we did those type of communications, unless that vendor's physically paying attention to the city of Fairburn, they may not see it. But if that's something that council and mayor would like for us to do, we can as well, but um if I don't get it out of here before September thirtieth, there will be another finding, so.
Okay, um, yes, I would like to see us do some public notice of some kind. Um, so if you can find out what those requirements are, uh, so that we can do that, at a minimum, we should try to return the money as.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Whitmore?
Thank you.
And one final question, once it goes to the state, how long does it sit there before finally they realize that whoever those checks were written to? They're not coming for it before it comes back to our coffers?
It won't come back to us.
Will not.
Okay, members of council.
That was the answer, but I wanted to hear it.
Um, it becomes unclaimed property, you know how when you type in your name on the website to see if you have lost funds out there?
Mm-hmm.
That's what it becomes, so they won't be cutting us a check back.
Okay.
All right, thank you, uh, that concludes our presentation workshop. I'm gonna give us five minutes for any members of council in order to use the restroom or anything like that before we start, we'll start at two after seven.